Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. It's now 5:32. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Margulies.
I'm here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. We will be adjoining to closed session and once closed session is over, we will reconvene for our regular scheduled meeting, probably around 6:30. Hello, welcome back. We have reconvening from open session and we have no, I mean, from closed session to open session, and we have no reportable actions. So we are now beginning our regular meeting. It's about 6:30. It's still November 5th, 2025. So may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Margulies.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the law which stands the obligation of the God in this world, with the very true notice of swivel.
Thank you. That brings us to item two, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public who are online and in the chamber to address the council on, for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. And since it's an item that has not been agendized, we cannot have a lengthy conversation about it, but we can ask staff in it for placing that item on a future agenda if needed. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? Hello, Mr. Holmes. You may make your public comment.
Yes, James Holmes, Larkspur. I'd like to express my appreciation at reading reasonable questions being asked by Larkspur's representative to MCE. And I hope that the council will continue to support that representative and their questions rather than trying to suppress them as at least one other community has done. Thank you.
Well noted. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Are there anyone else online? Okay, so I will close public comment, which brings us to item three, which are our presentations. And our first and only one is a Climate Action Forum update. And who will be doing this? Our microphones are always in. Yeah, there you go.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask to defer this item to the next agenda. Unfortunately, the staff person who would make this report is not available.
Oh, okay.
And I need a little time to get up to speed so I can do that.
Okay. So we will be putting this presentation on the next agenda or the agenda after. Are we okay with that? All right, because I know Councilmember Margulies is with the Climate Action Forum. So, and you're in agreement with that. So thank you very much. It's a presentation which we're not doing tonight, so hold on to your thoughts for it when we do reschedule it. That brings us to item four, approval of the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. Is there any council member who would like to pull an item for discussion?
I'd like to discuss 4.3, please.
4.3, all right. Anyone else? Okay. Is there any member of the public who'd like to pull one of those three items for discussion? Nope. Okay, seeing none. I'll take a motion to approve 4.1 and 4.2.
So moved.
So seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? No. All right. So Councilmember Candell, what would you like to know about 4.3?
I think I just have a comment that I would like to make about it. Whenever something like this comes up, yes, I am clearly in favor of clean air. I am clearly against global warming. However, when there are changes that potentially cost Larkspur taxpayers money, I think we have an obligation to have a cost benefit analysis. What is it actually going to cost people and what is the gain? And when it comes to these types of, you know, climate action issues, on one side of the equation, I think, you know what, there's a billion and a half people in China and a billion and a half people in India, and they have no pollution regulations. And we have a president that's pushing coal and all this other stuff. And we have 13,000 people in Larkspur that are being asked to pay money to make the air cleaner. What are they being asked to pay? And how much is it actually going to make the air cleaner? And it doesn't make sense, you know? And there's an economic impact page on this, on page 32, that lays out, you know, for each household or unit, you know, it's probably going to run 20 grand, you know? By the time you do the hot water heater and you do the heating, you may have to upgrade your panel, you know, things like that. And what are we getting out of that? And it's for each one, it's 0.002 tons, metric tons per year is the benefit.
So is your request that before, if we ever send a support letter for some legislation, that we discuss the fiscal responsibility, the fiscal impact of it?
I just think that it should be, and if we say, you know what, it's worth it because we're leading by example. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, there are lots of reasons why we may say, you know what, there's more to this than there's dollars and cents. But I just don't think it's a no brainer that every time something comes up to make the climate better, that we're all like, we're making the climate better without weighing, you know, what the actual cost is. That was my comment to this.
Is that, I'll ask the city manager, is that something that's doable in the future to quantify things? Or have that, how would you recommend moving forward? Not necessarily on this letter, but just moving forward in quantifying things.
And I can just let you know, it is actually quantified in this report, which, you know, and as I said, it says how much it's expected to cost and what the gain is supposed to be. So all I'm saying is maybe we should have that conversation of, is this worth it? Instead of just green lighting every time something comes through to say, yes, it's good for the environment, let's just green light it.
So I think in this particular incident, we did have a climate action report, discussion. And we did actually have a report from not only the committee, but from the staff member at the time, right? But I, but I hear you that maybe we need to have a more robust economic discussion when we do that.
I would appreciate that. And I'm not going to stand in the way of this letter. I'm just saying, moving forward, I think it's probably our responsibility to our constituents to just make sure that whatever it's going to cost them, that we feel it's worth it.
Yeah, I think that we can do that. We can outline, try to outline a little bit more an economic argument before we, when we're having a discussion about those matters, before we consent to doing a support letter. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, and I mean, maybe just to tag on, I think, you know, of all the actions that we can take, it's often helpful to see, you know, where that quadrant is, where cost is lowest and benefit is highest. So, you know, it's not, I don't think any of us are, you know, opposing, you know, the basic intent or even this letter I want to vote for as well. But I, I share your, I share your.
Right, I mean, if it's going to cost 20 grand, maybe somebody would say, hey, I'd rather buy an electric car for 20 grand. Maybe that'll help the environment more than me electrifying it. Whatever it is, it's just, I feel like it's a conversation that should be had before we do this. But again, I'm not against the letter. It's a.
Yeah, so we can incorporate that into your conversations about things should they come up. Any other comment about 4.3?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Well, and then someone, a member of the public pointed out, like, one.
Oh, in the staff report, yes.
So if we could just make that correction.
So I, we did get a public comment that there was a typo, not a missed, a missed word in this staff report, but that the letter content is correct. So, yeah, I wanted to clarify that. And thank you for finding that. The letter content is accurate, which is what we're actually voting on. But staff report had some things upside down. Great. So any further comment? Okay. So do I have a motion to accept 4.3 after that discussion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Any abstentions? No. Okay, thank you for that. Item five is city manager's report.
I'm going to be brief. And I'm, Madam Mayor, first the housekeeping. One reminder that next Tuesday is Veterans Day. So city functions will be closed. The offices and the library will be closed on Tuesday. And other than that, we are having our first pretty serious rain of the season. More to follow, but I always like to remind folks, this is the time to start checking the trees on your property, making sure that their root systems are stable and just generally being aware of any concerns you have that the rain might be causing, that you might want to let us know if we can come out and be of assistance. We don't go on people's property to help them with their trees, but if there's something in the public right of way, please let us know.
Okay. Any questions of that? No? All right. That brings us to council members' reports. Who would like to start? Anyone? No? Okay. Okay.
Great. Just a quick update on MCE. I know it's been in the news quite a bit. I just wanted to let people know that the, I've been working on, I've been your Larkspur representative to MCE since the start of this year. It's definitely coincided with a period where MCE is seeing challenges in operating performance. And so since I have a finance background, that's just been something that I've been very focused on. And as a ratepayer, also very concerned about the level of rates that everyone is paying. I ultimately would like to be able to reduce rates, but in order to get there, we need to be able to get there in a fiscally responsible way. And, and in order to be able to reduce rates, I think that it's very important that MCE gets a handle on its energy costs. And so that's, that's what I've been focused on. And so I would say that what you read in the Marin IJ is correct. We, that reporter has been attending all of the committee meetings and the board meetings for the last six months. And so that is the art, the four part series of articles is a culmination of pretty much six months of work by that reporter. And, you know, it's hard to tell what will happen next because, you know, it is a 34 member board. But I will continue to ask questions and I will continue to work towards greater transparency and better oversight on behalf of the ratepayers. And if anyone is interested and wants to talk more about MCE, you can feel free to reach out to me or you can attend any of the MCE meetings. They are open to the public. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, that's been good work. I mean, and for those of you who haven't read the four part report, it's on the Marin IJ's website. And there's also an editorial in support of the, a lot of the work that Stephanie and the Marin representatives are doing. So thank you for that. Anything down here? Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, actually, I'll tag on Stephanie. So I was on MC for a year and a half before. And Stephanie asked me to attend the executive meeting, which was discussing compensation for the CEO. And it was a really good robust, robust discussion. And, and I also feel as a council member and as a member of this community, I would love to hear more from the community. You know, there isn't any group, there are always some vocal people, but, but I think this affects a lot of us. So, you know, I intend to reach out and try to understand. And I want to thank Stephanie for really, it's not only 38 members, I would say 35 of them are not looking at the issue much at all. And so, so it's a bit of a, you know, swimming upstream exercise for Stephanie. So I really want to express appreciation. And I'll just say lastly, so the IJ called me and asked me on my vote. So I voted no on the compensation package. And I said, my vote was based on the challenging financial climate, consideration of executive pay in other CCAs. So there are, you know, many others in the, you know, eight that we looked at in particular in the Bay Area. And using metrics like the total megawatt hours load for the other CCAs and the total customers like AVA and Clean Power Lines, you know, I really thought that had to be done as a comp. And then finally, I really wanted to elevate the fiscal transparency to the board as an urgent priority. And I have faith that Don will pursue that. So again, thanks, Stephanie. And, and please, community members, you know, some of you, you know, were there when I was there last year. And I feel there's so many really educated people, but there's also just a lot of concern. And I think we just need to hear more from people. So, you know, the IJ can, you know, say that there's something to look at, but then I think it's up to the public to say, yeah, this is important. So the issue moves forward. Thank you.
Great. Sarah, anything? Okay, Scott?
Not today.
I just have a few, I got that same text. Is that for that fire? Yeah, I'm on false point two. Of course, you get better details than I get. Just a few things. You mentioned Veterans Day next Tuesday. There is an invitation that's gone around to all electives if they are interested in attending the Veterans Day memorial ceremony at the flagpole at the Marin Civic Center. So it's at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, and I might be going up for there. Since we last met, I did a proclamation read at the 50th anniversary of Marin Primary. And that was a great outdoor party they had a couple of weeks ago to celebrate their 50 years. And honestly, I had never been on that property, which is an old Larkspur Corder Madera school that is now a private school, Marin Primary. And they offered for any of us, if we're interested in getting a tour of the property, to let them know. And they'd love to show us around. So the other thing, Perry's, at Perry's Restaurant is doing their holiday tree lighting. And they've announced a date for Wednesday, December 3rd, 5 o'clock, and the fire department usually brings a truck there. So we usually go if we can. So mark your calendars for that. And then the downtown business owners, Downtown Business Association is working with myself and manager Schwartz about magic on magnolia, reconfiguring magic on magnolia, and to be on Saturday, December 6th. So they are working on a plan for, for that outdoor celebration by not closing the street and doing a few other things instead. But I was working with the Downtown Business Owners Association, and they've also worked with the city manager about that. So save the date for that on December 6th. Okay. That brings us to public hearing. So we have two public hearings tonight, which are, oh, actually, three, which are follow ups, two of them, from a previous presentation of adopting some ordinances in regards to our fire code. So item number 7.1A and 7.1B, you handled them together last time. Are you, do you want to do them together last?
I would leave that up to the city council, our legal council, whether we should take them individually or together.
There are two different ordinances, 1092 and 1093. So we should.
I'm just waiting for the microphone to come on. Because they're public hearings, I'd suggest taking them up separately.
Okay, fantastic. So we're going to look at ordinance 1092, which is 7.1A.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, Ribbon Martin Fire Chief with the Central Marin Fire Authority and your local fire chief. We are here at a public hearing as part of our triannual fire code adoption meetings. Before you, we have ordinance 1092, which repeals and reenacts chapter 14.04, which adopts the 2025 California Fire Code with amendments with, or supported by our local findings. As you recall, at our October 15th council meeting, we introduced ordinance 1092 and waived the first reading. And part of it was explaining the code adoption process. So as a quick reminder is, the International Code Council typically writes the model code, which then is adopted and reviewed by the California Building Standards Commission. Along with the California State Fire Marshal, they then make California specific amendments. A lot of it is reorganizing numbers, adding new sections, depending on what the new hazards are within the built environment and what needs to be addressed. The biggest changes that we will see within the 2025 California Fire Code is they actually removed sections that dealt with wildland fire protection and defensible space standards and put them in a separate standalone codebook. So those are the big differences there. Other than that, a lot of the same amendments that we have had and adopted in the past through local findings are the same amendments that are in here. For example, one of them would be your fire sprinkler ordinance, which requires residences that either do a substantial remodel over several years, have to install residential fire sprinkler system. What that does for us here locally, it allows us to then improve the fire safety of our existing built environment. Otherwise, the only thing that's required is brand new construction. And at this, at the rate where we look at today, we would never, ever achieve the amount of fire protection that we have currently if it wasn't for that type of ordinance that's here locally adopted. With that, I will open it up 20 questions for you. Otherwise, I would recommend adopting ordinance 1092.
Okay. We'll begin before the public hearing is open. Any questions of the fire chief about this? This is our second time looking at this ordinance. So any questions? No? Okay. So since this is a public hearing, I'll open up, oh, I got to hit this thing. Open up the public hearing. Are there any members in the audience, community members in the audience who would like to make a comment or ask a question about this ordinance 1092? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online? Nope. Okay. So I will close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Do we have further questions? No? All right. Well, then we'll take a motion to approve. Do we have to read the whole thing, Sky? It's quite a mouthful.
I believe you can just.
Say ordinance.
Do it by the ordinance number.
Okay. Would anybody like to move to ordinance 1092?
Sure, I would like to move to adopt ordinance 1092.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Any abstentions? No. Thank you. That brings us to item 7.1B, which is ordinance 1093.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Once again, we're here part of our triannual code adoption cycle. What's pretty unique about ordinance 1093, which we introduced and waived the first reading at our previous meeting on October 15th. This one actually adopts the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code with local amendments. As I mentioned with our previous ordinance, the California Building Standards Commission, along with the State Fire Marshal's office for the first time, actually took the model code of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code that dealt with defensible space standards, vegetation management, exterior building construction methods that would then help reduce the structural vulnerability that we're seeing with these major wildland fires. And what they took was sections of the California Building Code, for example, chapter 7A, sections of the residential code 337, which both dealt with building construction, and then chapter 49 of the California Fire Code, and lumped them all into one code, a standalone code. So that's what we have here before you today. The biggest thing with this one is that we have to adopt a map associated with the Wildland Urban Interface Code because it dictates on where these building standards are going to be required and whether we are going to require defensible space standards within these local jurisdictional areas. If you look on the map, they are the same locations that are identified within the Master Fire Safety Regulations that were the original chapter 14.10. What we're doing now is replacing what used to be the Master Fire Regulations with the new California WUWE Code, which meets the same and mirrors the same requirements within the existing code. With that, I will open it up to questions for you. And I will also make a recommendation to adopt ordinance 109.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions that the council has on that presentation? Or the map or anything? No? Okay. Will come back to us if you, if something comes up. So this is a public hearing. So I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or give a comment about this item, which would be ordinance 1093? Nope. So seeing none in the auditorium? Auditorium. Seeing none in the hall? I see one hand online. Do you have a comment? Is this Mr. Holmes?
Yes, James Holmes, Larkspur. Both of these ordinances have provisions which state that enforcement is not mandatory and that the enforce, the ordinances do not create a mandatory duty, but rather allow for prosecutorial discretion. And that's a very good thing because at least one provision of proposed 1093 would be hugely unreasonable and draconian and controversial if strictly enforced. That is up on page nine of 17, page nine of 17, section 604.6. Three sections are problematic. Section number three, subsection number three says, "To cut tree limbs overhanging roofs and decks." Well, many of us have huge trees overarching roofs and decks, dozens of feet up. Subsection six says, "To remove growth of plants less than three inches in diameter up to a height of 10 feet within 30 feet of the structures." Well, this would destroy all privacy within 30 feet of the structures. And section eight says, "Cut and remove trees up to six inches in diameter within 30 feet of the structures to thin out the canopies." Together, these provisions would defoliate many Larkspur lots. All of these measures seem to contemplate large, flat lots where privacy and screening are not issues. Certainly, that's what is depicted in the fire safety brochures, which show huge lots, but that's not Larkspur, which have many minuscule lots without 30 feet in any direction, let alone all directions. So this section would be unreasonable, draconian, and hugely controversial if it were strictly applied in Larkspur. It should not be enforced in that way and preferably not even adopted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any comment on that? Or I think he's speaking to the ability to have flexibility in enforcement.
Yeah, so right now, within our Fire Prevention Bureau, we utilize education. Well, when we look at fire prevention, there's the three Es, engineering, education, and enforcement. I usually throw in the fourth E in there before enforcement, which is encouragement, to try to explain to our residents why it's important that certain vegetation shouldn't be either near or around their homes and what vegetation should be removed. It isn't a process of clear cutting your property. It's creating that park-like setting while still trying to maintain fire safety at the same time. The residents, or actually the sections that were outlined are actually current regulations that are being enforced today, countywide and statewide. When you start talking about specific defensible space standards. So this is just the normal, basic, cut of the mill defensible space requirements that's currently being enforced today. And when we do true enforcement, typically those are the properties that are pretty egregious within town. And typically, we usually have one or two properties that we usually take to abatement. But those are typically the ones that are completely overgrown.
Okay. I see no more hands raised, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to us, the council. Is there any further questions of the fire chief on ordinance 1093?
I have a quick one. Yeah, Chief Martin, this, this is less about 1093, but about coordination. So, you know, we have 16 other fire jurisdictions. And I'm just curious, you know, I guess we take the 2025, you know, WUWE Code and the international, you know, 24. and everyone, you know, like Nevada is going to be different than, you know, Sausalito. But, but how, how is this overall coordinated? And, you know, is there a risk of, you know, not all the jurisdictions passing this? Or maybe just if you can give me a picture of what's going on in the counties as a whole?
For many years, what we've been trying to do as fire agencies is try to become more aligned, especially within the California Fire Code. Because what we see is the lot or the discrepancies across jurisdictional lines when it comes to what is within their codified municipal code. And so if we have one set of codes here, why are they, why do we in Larkspur feel like they're a hazard here, but yet not Nevada? So what we do is, once the codes are published typically by July 1st of 2025, which was this year, all of the fire prevention officers within all of the fire agencies within the county got together weekly and reviewed the California Fire Code, reviewed every local ordinance that each agency had already adopted, and then tried to mirror each other's codes and codebooks and ordinances that they're bringing forward, so they can be as close to as mirrored as possible. So the code before you is the exact same code that was adopted by the town of Port of Madera. It's the same code that's being adopted with some minor nuances within the Ross Valley Fire Department, within San Rafael, Nevada, and so.
And do you feel the county as a whole is converging? Like we, we have more standardization and uniformity than say five years ago?
Yes, absolutely. You know, being the fire marshal or being in fire prevention since about 2013, I've definitely seen the more and more alignment through all the fire agencies coming together, especially the process within the fire prevention officers. Their philosophy is that we're here to serve the community with one code, so that way it can be easier for our customers.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Since we have no further questions, is there any member of the council who would like to move ordinance 1093?
Yeah, I'll move 1093.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Any abstentions? No? Thank you very much, chief. Are you around for anymore or are you?
I think I'm gone.
You're out of here.
But thank you for your support, we truly appreciate it.
Yes, of course. That brings us to item 7.2, which is also a public hearing, introducing and wave the first reading of ordinance 1094. Did I read that right? Amending various sections of the Larkspur Municipal Code. Thank you and good night. Is that you, Alex? Or no, it's you, Allison, wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor Wayne, and members of the council. Before you tonight is ordinance 1094, adopting administrative updates to the Larkspur Municipal Code. Over the past few months, staff has reviewed the code and compiled necessary changes for a cleanup ordinance. Those changes include eliminating outdated references, improving, eliminating outdated language and improving references, and then updating regulations to reflect current city practices. So overall, there are 18 sections in the ordinance, and the staff report lays out a table that shows each change and its purpose. And the council can bring up any of the sections for discussion tonight, or if you'd like to remove any sections for consideration separately at a future meeting, you can do that as well. Otherwise, we recommend that the council open the public hearing to receive public comment and then approve the introduction by title only and waive further reading of ordinance 1094. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Hey, Guy. For the audience members speaking, could we take it outside a little bit? Thank you. All right. So thank you very much, Allison. Did everybody get all of that clear? So are there any members of the council who have any questions of this code update? Sure, go ahead.
Great.
And maybe reference which particular item?
Yes. So I am looking at number eight.
Okay.
It says library board duties and responsibilities, and one of them was to remove reviewing of the annual budget. I just was curious whether the library board is aware of that and whether they had any comments.
It hasn't been done to anybody's knowledge ever, so I don't know that we asked the library board, because Director Hill said he went back in the record, and this is on the books but not done, and just suggested it be cleaned up and removed. So you'd be asking the library board, do you want to start doing something you've never?
They've never done?
You'd never should have done.
Okay, all right.
I was just gonna add, if I'm remembering these sections of the code, they're a holdover from another time when library boards had independent authority. And now that the city operates under a manager form of government, all of the staff reports to the city manager. So it really is just a reflection of current legal reality and actual reality.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my second question was regarding the WUWE, when I know Chief Martin just laughed, but I read in the, in the staff report table, and let me try to find the number.
Do you remember the number?
Yeah, it's number.
Oh, it number 14.
14? Is it 14? Okay, yes, 14. So in the, in the staff table, it says that they, you wanted to specifically exclude HOAs or parcels where, where the entire parcel is not being sold. Did I read that correctly? So number one, yeah, so on page three of the table, number 14. It says, changing the requirement for fire resales to be conducted on residential parcels located in the wildland in urban interface will, one, clarify that fire resales are only required for residential lots if the entire parcel is being sold. So that's, that's what I read here. That was the intent, but when I actually read the the actual revision to the code, which is on page 13 of the PDF, section 15.40.045. It says, prior to the sale or exchange of any residential building or residential parcel located within, you know, designated WUWE. So it seems to me that when I read that, it says, any residential building or residential parcel. So does that exclude what you were intending to exclude?
Let me see if I can get the chief. This was his submission.
Oh, okay. Anyways, I, I, I was just curious, like I understood the intent, but I wasn't sure if the actual language that was being proposed was actually reflected the intent. So that was my question.
So why don't we hold on that, and we'll get the answer before we do any vote on that, if hopefully, or we can exclude it if we can't get an answer. But are there any other council members who have questions on these? Okay, so we'll hold on to that. We'll open a public hearing so we can get any information from anyone else, and then we'll see if we can return to that question. So opening, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question about Agenda Item 7.2 or has a comment? No? Is there anyone online who has a question about the code ordinances updates online? And I see no hands. So we will close the public hearing. We still need to get some clarification on item 14. Would you suggest that since the chief's not here to sort of answer it, that we could possibly hold item 14 out and pass the other?
I would say the better choice would be to continue the public hearing and wait till we can have the chief here to answer the questions. So I wouldn't take action. None of this, this is a cleanup of the code. It's not.
Okay.
There's no legal deadline that we're facing here.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Sure.
So is it clear what Vice Mayor Andre's question is that, that needs clarification?
I need an expert, because I do not understand. I understand what was asked. We're into the nuances of his world, and I don't, I don't even want to guess.
Okay. So with that question needing to be clarified, I think then we will continue this until a preview, another meeting, until we get some clarification on item 14. Do we need to vote on that, Sky? No. Or thank you, Allison, for putting this together. Does that come back then as another public hearing? Okay. So we'll move on from there, knowing that we have some questions in regards to item 14 specifically. And I think the other item that you brought up had been answered. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I don't know, it's, it looks like the city manager was trying to text the fire chief. If he does make it back tonight, we'd be able to wrap this up tonight.
I think at this point, I would just.
He's gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just told him.
Never mind.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
Okay.
Um, all right, that closes our public hearings. So that brings us to the business items, and we have two tonight. One is item 8.1, which is appointing one member of the council to the Planning Commission Floor Area Ratio Subcommittee. And I think our staff report is from Alex.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'll keep it brief for you tonight. Earlier this year, the Planning Commission created the Subcommittee looking at revising the regulations that the city currently has about the floor area ratio. They're trying to reduce the number of exceptions that people are seeking. And so through their discussions, they have asked that a member of the city council join them and form a joint Subcommittee so that they can have some collaboration and cohesion, make sure everybody is aligned. So this would be a joint Subcommittee between two bodies. It is subject to the Brown Act, meaning that it would be a public hearing with a published agenda and public comment. So staff requests that the city council appoint one member to this joint Subcommittee, which I don't expect will meet incredibly regularly. It's probably only a couple of meetings. I think they have already had preliminary discussions and are fairly close to a an idea of what they're after.
Okay. Are you, do you have an anticipated meeting schedule at this point, so that a council member who chooses to participate knows what that could be?
I don't have a schedule, but they, they're pretty flexible.
Okay. All right, so are there questions of Alex on this matter?
Yeah, is Zoom an option for the meetings?
I believe it would fall under the same regulations, where you'd have to post the agenda at your location, and it would be put, your location would be added to the agenda.
Yeah, we could follow the traditional Brown Act noticing rules and as long, and put the, as long as you knew, as long as the council member and anybody else attending by Zoom knew where they were going to be, we'd be able to post that on the agenda. We wouldn't be subject to the limits on the number of times of meeting, but it would be necessary that a quorum of members be present in the city for any meeting.
Would it be helpful to have a primary member and an alternate? Or do we need, in case that primary attendee is not available?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Okay, so this came, I think a lot of the backs, the backstory on this is we have had a lot of, of appeals of building permit and projects, and many residents have expressed concern that we need to update our FAR floor area ratio. So I appreciate you helping to, to actualize that. Is there? It's a business item. Are there any questions of the audience on this matter? Nope? No questions online this matter? Okay, so I'll bring it back to us. Is there any member of the council who's really interested in volunteering for this role? Okay. I think it would be, you know, we all have busy lives, so I'd, I'd like to see an alternate, if that's all right with you, who may be available. Should the, should Councilmember Margulies not be available? Is that all right with you? Are we, anybody want to be the alternate?
I would be happy to be the alternate.
Okay. Terrific, so do we, we just, I guess I just make that appointment. So Councilmember Margulies is your primary, Councilmember Candell is your alternate. And and please let them know when the next, as soon as possible, when the committee's going to meet, so that they can make sure to attend. All right, and also, Alex, any materials in advance would be helpful so that they can get up to speed on what the committee's already done.
Sure, I think there's only an Excel spreadsheet with a lot of data on it.
Good, well, I'm glad these guys are doing it, because I don't do Excel spreadsheets very well. All right, thank you. So that brings us to our last item tonight, believe it or not, which is 8.2, which is my favorite time to talk about the Larkspur Library at the Commons Budget Amendment, including for additional landscape improvements at the site. And it looks like we have additional material handouts that are available in the back. There's, there's, and available online. There is one packet about the library and another packet about the landscaping, which will also be available on our online portal for individuals, but here for those in the audience who'd like to. And before our staff starts, Director Skinner, I just want to say I really appreciate on Friday at 4:30, you took me on tour of the building, and I hadn't been on the building for six months. And I, as many of you know, I've been working on this project for a long time, and I was just extremely impressed with what I saw on Friday. And a lot of hard work has gone into this, and I think we're going to have a really tremendous building when it's all said and done. And thank you, Julian, for taking me around on a tour. I didn't have to wear a hard hat, though, which I was kind of disappointed about. Oh, shoot, I was supposed to say that. There was nobody working, so it was okay. Oh, no. Okay, forget that. Can we erase the tape on that one? All right, so could you please give us a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Here tonight to give an update, a brief update on the library, and then we do have a request for action tonight, which is adoption of a budget amendment for the project. And so just firstly, I do get a lot of comments in passing about how quickly the library is going up and how good everything looks. And so it's, it's not me, it's the, the team that is with me tonight. They've come to a lot of the meetings where we made presentations on the library. And so we have representative from our architect, Tom Veal is here. Ignatia Ramirez from Kitchell is here. And then Carson Miller, who's the landscape architect, is here also. Some of the items in the budget amendment tonight are landscape related. And then in addition, as we look at some of these additions tonight, the Habitat Garden is one of the items in there. And so our funding partners for that, Refuge and Marin, are here tonight, and they also have a brief presentation after my presentation to talk a little bit more about what they do and their plans for the Habitat.
So before you continue, I just want to make sure the council saw the updated Agenda Item 8.2 with the red changes to it, which changed, some of the, the dollar amounts were a little different. So I want to make sure we're all working off that same Agenda Item. I think Allison sent that around a little bit earlier in the day. It was updated to show corrected budget numbers, which are now in red. So making sure we all have the same information. Thank you.
So as I mentioned, I'll have a brief just update, some of the latest photos from the site. And then I'll get into the budget amendment. There's a few components to it. One is some ongoing project costs and anticipated enhancements for the project. And then the two landscape areas that we've presented to you previously, the Commons Area and Habitat Garden. Same slide I show at all of these presentations, I just keep moving the red arrow over to show where we're at. The boxes are all in the same place where they were to show where the work was projected to take place in the schedule when we started, and right now the red arrow is falling kind of in the beginning of the fourth quarter of this calendar year. So as you can see, windows, doors are all in, we're working on the interior. Siding and stucco or the cement plaster is actually a little ahead of schedule. And they're already getting going on some of the landscaping, the irrigation is going in, and a lot of the flat work is already in also. Here's some of the latest photos. So this is from the parking lot. So we're looking at the front or the back, depending on how you view the, the building. And so you can see from here that the siding has been installed, the windows are all in, the doors are all in. So the, the building is now what we call dried in, which means that although it's not weather tight, all the seals haven't been installed, but it's in a condition that allows them to work on the interior, lets them finish the drywall, put the tape up, and they've even started doing some painting, because it's mostly protected from the weather. Here's a view inside the library. So here I step just inside the children's library, looking towards the east. And the next one is in the main area of the library. So here I'm standing roughly where the circulation desk would be, and I'm looking out towards the west end, where you see all the glass in the background there. That's basically the west end of the building, and that's to the left in the back there, that's one of the glass walls that will open up, so we can have some indoor/outdoor space in the library. This is the budget as it stands today. So this is before tonight's budget amendment request. This is all of the funds that you've approved for the project to date, including the very last budget amendment, which was allocating money to the Rose Lane improvements in the little parking lot. So that shows the total budget today is just over 18 million. And then we have all the various funding sources are listed there. And then Administrative Services Director Gabrielle provided an attachment to the staff report that has a further breakdown of this other category that's in the packet.
So could you repeat that again? I see the other category, there's a breakdown of that where?
Yeah, so in the packet that was provided, it was an attachment to the staff report. I believe that there was.
And the latest one has the red changes to it.
Yeah, so for the most part, the other funds that are in here were the Measure B, the Measure G, and the Measure C that you allocated to the project in a previous budget cycle, plus there's the 525,000 in road fees and road funds that were allocated to the five hundred twenty-five thousand in road fees uh, and uh, road funds uh, that were allocated to um, the Rose Lane widening.
Got it. So, so the, the, the three million is still coming from the city of Larkspur, but just not from the general fund?
Yes, okay, yes. Um, this was a slide I presented at the last meeting in September where we um, presented to you the proposed upgrades for the landscape areas. Uh, we outlined that we would likely be coming back with a budget amendment based on our tracking of project costs um, at the time. And so we highlighted these and at that time we did request the budget amendment for Rose Lane because we needed to award uh, the contract for the street improvements. Uh, but we said we would come back to you with the request for uh, the building budget amendment and that's uh, what we're here for uh, tonight. Um, so the total uh, budget amount uh, is laid out in the staff report and the resolution is one uh, one million six hundred seventy thousand seven hundred and thirteen. There's three main components to that or three main funding sources. Um, the first is the Commons Foundation. We've been working a lot with the uh, Commons Foundation uh, on improvements, additions, enhancements to uh, the building and the site. Uh, they've been continuing their fundraising effort and they were able to um, allocate another uh, five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars to the project, bringing their total amount up to six point five million. Um, and as you'll see uh, in subsequent slides, the bulk of this money is going towards the development of the Commons area, that landscaped area between the building um, and the parking lot. Uh, the next item here is Refugia Marin. Uh, so this contribution is towards the Habitat Garden, which is uh, the proposed landscape area at the south and east perimeters um, of the site. And as I mentioned, uh, Refugia Marin are here tonight and they'll be able to talk a little bit more about that component of, of the work um, after me. And then the last component is General Fund Reserve. And so this is the eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. There's uh, subsections of this uh, request, including uh, three hundred and fifty thousand um, request to fund the remainder of what we're calling Phase One of the Habitat Garden, that I'll go over in another couple of slides. Uh, and then the remainder five hundred thousand um, is a lot of the um, expenses and costs that I shared with you at the September uh, meeting that I'll detail um, in the following slides. So just to remind you, as we talked through these additional uh, budget amounts, uh, the Commons area is that landscaped area on the left here uh, in between the parking lot and the building and then the Habitat Garden, when we talk about that, um, we're talking about the uh, southern and the um, eastern perimeters of the site. Uh, so I'll deal first with the Commons um, area. So this was the proposed budget uh, that we presented back in September, that estimated would be about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so uh, to develop the Commons area based on the concept plans that we had at the time. Um, so our contractor's been working uh, together with the designer and the Commons Foundation. Uh, and this number uh, has come in pretty close to what that is. So the Commons Foundation additional funding of five hundred ninety-eight thousand will cover this uh, plus a couple of other uh, things within the building. Uh, the, there's a monument uh, sign proposed uh, out front that will list some of the activities that will be taking place in the library. And then also a donor wall inside that will recognize um, a lot of the donors uh, for the project. So that's the five hundred ninety-eight thousand Commons uh, Commons Foundation Fund uh, primarily for the Commons area, but also a little bit for the uh, the sign and the donor wall. Uh, the next component is the Habitat Garden. So this one, we presented it to you back in um, September, had about a nine hundred thousand dollar price tag associated with it. So we've really worked with uh, Refugia and our design team to uh, try and phase this or look at components of it that we could uh, build with some of the funding um, that was available. And so we've kind of broken it down into a Phase One, a Phase Two and a Phase Three. Um, and this is the, the cost sheet that I presented back in September and I've kind of tried to identify components of it that uh, ideally would be performed now in a Phase One. Uh, could be performed as soon as Phase One is completed, Phase Two, and then Phase Three is a lot of the amenities that could come later as additional funding uh, comes down the line. Um, so that's uh, how I've dotted things here. Um, and then to look at, concentrate on Phase One, which is what the funding request uh, comprises tonight in the budget amendment um, is about five hundred and seventy thousand of that nine hundred and thirty thousand. And so these are the items that ideally would be performed now sooner rather than later. Uh, some of the components, we need to get completed because they have to get done before the planting can take place. We've got to grade it, got to prep the soil, uh, we've got to create pathways so that we can access uh, the planting areas. Um, and then there's also some components that um, are most efficiently completed now because we have a, a civil contractor on the site that has heavy equipment and they can move boulders around. Um, and they can plant trees, um, and they can do the, the fence and things like that that would be more expensive later on and also may impact the use of the library parking lot and have some impact on the garden. So uh, we've got this list of, these are all items that were contained in that uh, prior list that went down to nine hundred and thirty thousand. So this is the first five hundred and seventy thousand or so of those. Uh, Refugia Marin have told us they have fundraising efforts now that would allow for about two hundred and twenty thousand towards this work. Um, they're reserving other funds that they have to do the planting, uh, which they uh, want to do. They would not have our contractor do that. They would like to be in charge of the planting. Um, so applying their two hundred and twenty thousand to this list of five hundred and seventy thousand um, gives you that deficit of three hundred and fifty thousand. As, as we mentioned at the, at the last meeting, we might want to consider um, partnering with Refugia and providing some city funds towards uh, the Habitat Garden. And so what we've done here is um, the Refugia items are all programmed for the things that have to go first. And then you've got a list of, these are the things that really should go now and they're in all priority order. Um, if you were to um, direct us to fund all of those, then that would be the full three hundred and fifty thousand. So that would get you uh, in addition to the things that I mentioned, which is the grading, uh, the pathway work, um, setting up the irrigation, um, and then the Granite Creek path. It will be planting the trees, putting the boulders in and the rope and post fence. Now, the, these are listed in priority order. Um, so starting with uh, the two hundred and twenty thousand from Refugia gets them about halfway through the irrigation work and then their two hundred and twenty thousand is exhausted. So the first item that we would suggest applying city funds uh, to, if that's your direction, is to complete the irrigation uh, for the site. And then the next is completing that uh, that pathway. Um, these are all things that require heavy machinery and are most efficiently done now while um, Alton is uh, and their subcontractors are out on the site. And then moving down the list, uh, trees, again, they're big trees, heavy equipment is best to use these. Uh, and then boulders is the same thing. The boulders are heavy, they need heavy equipment to move them. They could do them later, but it won't be as efficient and it could be more expensive and uh, more impactful. Um, the other thing we're talking about, the trees and the boulders is um, the, the people in the know, the landscape architect and Refugia have told me that typically in sites like this, uh, when you're doing the grading, um, you use the boulders and the trees as reference points when you grade and you make sure everything works together. If you do all the grading now and you try and come in and put the trees and the boulders in later on, it may look a little odd and somebody may say, why is, why is the boulder there? But if you incorporate and you put those things in when you're working on the site as a whole, it, it comes out as a much better uh, seamless uh, product. So that's why um, they're interested in having the trees and the boulders in that preliminary work so they can get all the mass grading uh, correct. And then the rope and post fence, um, there's obviously uh, a desire, once this is constructed through Phase One uh, to let folks know that we don't want them wandering out there. We want to direct them to the paths that are going to be created. So that's what the rope and post fence um, would do uh, would be to protect um, the investment in this area and direct folks to the paths and so they're not walking from the parking lot directly um, over into the Habitat Garden. So that's.
Stop for a second. Um, that's a lot of material. Any questions at this um, at this stage in his presentation about Phase One?
I guess I just have a general question because I think the last time we talked about this, I was concerned that the parts of the perimeter, you know, if, you know, five years from now, the city decides that it wants to repurpose parts of that parcel for something else, to build a different structure. You know, are these trees and these boulders going in that area? Or, you know, where we might potentially decide that we want to build something else? So it looks like the Habitat Garden is going to be that J shape there, so.
Yeah, so um, predominantly the um, Habitat Garden, that's the biggest widest area and is being designed as a meadow, which is more of an open space and it's going to be flatter. So it will have less of the improvements. Yes, it still may have a boulder or two. I think the architect could probably, when they give their presentation, provide a little bit more information, but for the most part, a lot of the amenities that they plan on building in are not in that area. That's kind of designed as the open meadow part of the Habitat Garden, so it'll be more like an open field. And a lot of the other things, the benches and the signs and the boulders and the trees that will come along uh, will be in the um, other areas of the Habitat Garden. But yes, it won't be completely bare. There will be some, some trees in there that would be a, a consideration if we wanted to develop that parcel differently in, in, in the future. But it'll be less concentrated than the, than the rest of the Habitat Garden. And that's probably the only real sizable area there that could support a building with the setbacks that would be needed from the property lines. Is that kind of that tip of the J there that you're talking about?
Okay. Great, thank you. Any further questions before he goes on? Okay, so.
So I'll uh, discuss briefly Phase Two and Phase Three. I apologize, I didn't put this um, in the staff report, but I thought it would be good for the presentation to give you uh, a better overall view of the Habitat Garden uh, because we're not planning on stopping at Phase One. The, the Phase One is the work that we want to incorporate into Alton's contract while they're out there. Uh, Refugia uh, plan to continue the work uh, through an agreement with the city after the project. Uh, and some of this before the end of the project. So the Phase Two is the planting and a lot of the uh, the smaller irrigation, the individual lines to all the plants. So that's something Refugia plan on funding and uh, doing. Um, that's Phase Two and they plan on doing that as soon as we're done with the Phase One work. They'd like to have the planting done by the time we open the building, so it looks complete. And when we open the building and all our landscaping's done, the majority of their landscaping is, is complete also. So that's the Phase Two is the uh, the planting. It says planting, that's planting and mulching and kind of the finishing of the actual plant areas. Um, and then Phase Three um, is a lot of the amenities. So uh, the log stump benches, the sign, some of the play areas, more of the amenities uh, that would be kind of peppered around through the Habitat Garden. Um, so that's the Phase Three, that's not part of this request, uh, but Refugia are continuing to fundraise and they're hoping to get Phase Three done as, as soon as they can and start working on those plans as soon as we're finished with Phases uh, One and Two. Um, so that's all part of the Habitat Garden, it's just not part of your uh, budget.
Can I ask one quick question, Julian? The bio retention crossings, is that, I mean, I have the original presentation which showed the design. Is that sort of the bridge that would cross from the parking lot over to the Granite Creek path?
Yes.
Is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so the access would then be to it currently from right next to the library. The Granite Creek path would come in from the area that's being landscaped by the Commons Foundation.
Yes, or there may be, instead of putting in these um, the bio swell crossings were somewhat enhanced and were designed to look like a feature. Um, we will put something in temporarily uh, for Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay.
For access, it just won't be the, the feature that the bio swell crossing would have been.
I see.
Later because there's a price tag to them.
Okay.
But they will have something functional so that they can get across.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, so uh, we've covered the Commons Foundation uh, portion of the budget amendment. We've covered the Refugia portion of the budget amendment, which was their two hundred and twenty. This, these next slides deal with the General Fund Reserve components of the budget amendment request. Um, and again, these were highlighted in September uh, third's presentation. I'm going to go into them in a little bit more detail and I'm available for uh, questions if you want to drill down um, anymore. Um, this is the overview of those that add up to eight hundred and fifty-two uh, thousand. Um, the subsequent slides go into these in a little bit more detail. Uh, one of these numbers is that three hundred and fifty thousand contribution to the Habitat Garden um, that we just discussed. So if you subtract that from the eight fifty-two, there's about five hundred thousand dollars of other uh, project enhancements. Uh, I do have some of the rebates um, into these numbers. So there are electric vehicle rebates that are available. Those are accounted for in here. Uh, what's not accounted for um, in here, because we don't, we haven't gone through the process and we don't quite understand how much it will cost because we'll have to hire consultants. But um, there are solar rebates that are available that if you're um, if you're a private person and you pay income tax, you get uh, credits on your, on your taxes. Um, there's a mechanism where a government agency that doesn't pay taxes can also recoup some of those costs, but it's a process. Um, and um, it involves some filings and things that we probably need to hire a consultant for. So roughly you get thirty to forty percent of your costs invested in solar and the batteries back. Um, so roughly, we think that's about a ninety-five thousand dollar uh, figure, but we haven't gone through that process. We don't know exactly when that money might come in or in what chunks it might come in. So that's kind of parked aside from the numbers I'm presenting today. Uh, but I didn't want to overlook that because that is one of the uh, at the end of the day, project costs or credits. Um, so inspections, two hundred thousand. So as you recall, uh, we decided to treat this project um, like a private project in the sense that we wanted to use the city's third-party inspector for all of the building inspections and follow all of the building code rules and have all of the inspections and check-ins like somebody building their house or shopping center would have to do. So um, that's uh, quite an expense to go through that. I think we're up to over a hundred inspections coming out and making sure the nails are in the right place. A lot of this is for public safety, uh, all of the life safety components of the building and having somebody make sure everything needs code. Um, another component of this cost is because we have a, a steel structure, there's a lot of welding that needs to take place and that requires special uh, welding inspections. Um, so that's a cost. And then the other is um, window leak testing that we did that's above and beyond what's required by code. Um, if you've ever been in a building where the windows leak, it's no fun. Um, so we spent a little bit more money to make sure uh, that the windows aren't going to leak in this building. And so we uh, did, I call it the hurricane test, but basically they uh, taped um, plastic around the windows and simulated a hurricane event uh, with high pressure and they tested the two different types of window systems we have to make sure that they're not going to uh, leak in extreme uh, weather events. Um, staff and consultants, so this is a combination of additional staff time and primarily our construction manager, Kitchell. There's a little bit of parametrics time in there too for Rose Lane. Uh, but most of these additional costs versus what we presented at the uh, project inception uh, are due to the extended project length. So back when we first started this, uh, we had a schedule that would have had the library finished about now. Um, but we changed a few things uh, at the beginning of the project and um, extended out the, the contract length. And so now we're looking to uh, finish in about March, so we have some extended contract length for some of our consultants. In addition to that, uh, including the uh, enhancements you're looking at tonight, we've added about two and a half million dollars uh, of improvements into the project. And these are not fixing things that were wrong, these are adding value into the building. And so there's a cost associated with all of the oversight um, related to adding two and a half million dollars uh, worth of work into the project. And that's reflected in the staff and consultants uh, figure that you see here. Uh, the next is utility connections. This is still an estimate. We don't have all of our final numbers from Marin Municipal. Uh, Ross Valley and Pacific Gas and Electric, we basically apply, they give us an estimate of what it will be. And then at the end of the day, when we get our meter set or whatever, they tally up all the costs and they give us an invoice. So this hundred thousand is our estimate based on the numbers that they've provided us with to date. And then there's the three hundred and fifty thousand Habitat Garden number um, that I mentioned. So these are the first four components of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh, general fund request. Um, here are the last three numbers that go into that eight hundred and fifty thousand bottom line. One is we want to account for previous contract change order savings. So we've come to you before with some budget amendments and we had estimated costs at that time before we undertook the work. Uh, some of those uh, tasks through uh, value engineering and reviewing from Kitchell. Um, and final pricing from Alton, they did go out and do some bidding on some of these items and they were able to get some of the prices down from the original estimate. Um and final pricing from Alton. They did go out and do some bidding on some of these items, and they were able to get some of the prices down from the original estimates they gave us. In total, there's about sixty nine thousand dollars in the budget amendments that you've approved. Um of savings versus uh what we had estimated those to be. So uh we're carrying those. Budgeted funds before um as a credit to get this um eight hundred, this number now down to the eight hundred fifty. The other um credit towards asking for additional funds is the project included a contingency allowance at the onset. Um the grant application allowed applying for a grant with a contingency allowance. So we want to make sure we spend all of that grant money, including the uh contingency allowance. That was included in the grant. So we're going to use some of that money to offset some of the additional uh costs. That's. About three hundred six thousand of contingencies that are still in the project. Um and then the last item is this is enhanced construction costs. So these are all of the. Uh change orders and enhancements that you haven't seen before in budget amendment requests. Uh that we anticipate will be needed uh through the end of the the project. Um and again, uh. Categories within categories, but um there's different components of this two hundred twenty eight thousand add here. Um there is a component of um credits. That we've worked out with the contractor. Um as you recall, there was a gas generator in the original project that got deleted. And so there's money that comes back. Um to the city for the contractor not having to install the gas uh generator. Um and then when you awarded the Rose Lane project, uh we actually revised the project limits a little bit, and we included more. Of the library site in the Rose Lane project. So when you allocated the budget funds for Rose Lane, um. There's a little bit of money now we don't have to spend on the library project because the Rose Lane project is. Thank you. Um and then the E V rebates are captured in this number two. It's about seventy two thousand dollars of rebates. We should be able to get back uh for the electric vehicle chargers. And there's a few other things, plus minus uh deltas um. That uh sum up to about two hundred sixty four thousand in savings. Um the next is additional uh costs uh that have come up during construction. These are. Mostly value adds that were um at the moment things. So um. We decided we would install story polls so that the public could see the building during the design review process. So that wasn't part of the original budget. Uh but we did authorize story polls to go up. Uh we added the ability to move the bookshelves within the building to allow some flexibility in configuration in the event that library. Programming changes over time or there's some. Um event where the bookshelves need to be moved out of the way. It doesn't. Mean people will be able to move them every day. These are super heavy. It just means that if we need to. Uh we'll be able to unlock the bookshelves and and move them out of the way for uh flexibility. Um and then a few other things here. As you recall, we did move the parking lot uh. Further away from the building. So there were some both design costs and construction costs associated with that move that didn't get captured before. So. Those are included in um in this number. And then the next is proposed enhancements. These are things that haven't fully been incorporated into the project yet, but. Uh we feel they're good value adds for the project, and there's definitely a cost savings in. Uh doing these items now versus coming back and doing them later. Some of these were. Uh items require wiring within the walls, so it's definitely cheaper to do them now. Uh than coming back and and doing them later. The most significant ones of these are upgrading the uh audio visual for the conference rooms. Uh so we want to, we want uh to be able to set these three conference rooms up so people can come in and do a a zoom. Uh without having to download an app or run a bunch of cables and and things like that. So there's some technology um that will allow some plug and play. Uh some microphones and additional speakers in some of these conference rooms, so they will be set up better for audio visual. And then um setting up the largest of the conference rooms, which is a little bit smaller than this room. It's actually the same size of this room without the dais. Uh but wiring that room and setting it up um so that it could function as uh a broadcast center if we wanted to hold a city council meeting or a planning commission or. Parks and Recreation Commission meeting there, that could be a backup location. So. Uh this cost add would be to set up everything so that if we in a pinch had to go and move a meeting over there, Marin TV would be able to go and do the same. Uh broadcast that they're able to do out of this building um out of the uh community space over at the library. Um and then one of the bigger components of this is we had always talked about looking to do something a little bit different with the eastern end of the parking lot. So. If you think about the site plan and the parking lot that's south of the building, uh the main entryway to the building kind of bisects that parking lot, and there's kind of a near section when you drive in. And then a a far section uh that's next to what would be the uh native grass area of the habitat garden. And we had talked. When we were looking at uh enhancing the commons area about maybe doing something different with that parking lot so that we could. Use it for outdoor events and have it kind of as like a backup plaza space. And so we had thought that having it in something other than plain asphalt might uh be more conducive to having an outdoor event. And so. Uh the contractors provided a pro uh proposal for basically doing a stamped and printed. Asphalt. And so I have a couple of slides that show what that could. Uh look like, but this is an enhancement. Again, we haven't uh committed to this yet, but this is a. A cost proposal that we think if we want to do it, it makes sense to incorporate it into the project. Um at this time. So that's the two hundred twenty thousand is the things that we're looking at doing to enhance the project between now and uh when we finish.
Hey, hey Julian, do you know for that two twenty what the breakdown is between those different? Items in the two twenty, like we want to know how much the parking was. Do you have any idea?
So they're detailed. So um they're detailed in the staff report. Unfortunately, they're not in exactly the same format because. In the staff report, they're listed by the project that they're under, but I can go through the staff report and uh read these out. The A V for the conference rooms. Right now, this hasn't been approved, but the cost estimate we're working with is just under fifty thousand dollars. Uh the security upgrade and licensing, um that is sixty one thousand, and the bulk of that is actually for ten year licensing. So it's not for the cameras and the card readers that get installed. That's a cost. That we would have otherwise had to carry out for ten years. The parking lot cost is.
Forty seven thousand.
Forty seven thousand, six hundred and six. And then um yeah, what else is in there? The broadcast setup. There's two components to the broadcast setup. There's. Work that Alton have to do to wire everything. And then there's a Marin TV cost for putting their equipment in the in the room. And so one of those is fifteen thousand, and then the Marin. TV equipment is thirty thousand. So yeah, all of the breakdown for all of these costs are are listed out in the in the staff report. Uh I apologize, they're not in exactly the same categories as as this. Um because they're separated by uh project because that's how the budget amendment um was generated. But if there's anything up there, you see that you want the cost, I can look up in the staff report uh report and uh report back. And then the last category here is our cost sharing with the Commons Foundation that we continue to do. Um the items that I mentioned when I. Talked about the Commons Foundation funding was the donor wall and the monument sign out front. And so as we have done for a lot of this project, we're cost sharing with the Commons Foundation. And so. This is proposed as the city's contribution to those uh two items that the Commons Foundation has identified as. Um being a value add to the project. Um here's some slides that or here's a slide that shows two photos of what um enhanced asphalt could look like. And so the one at the bottom left is basically it's just it's colored. Uh it's like an epoxy that goes on the asphalt and it has a a stamp pattern on it. Um there's a series about a dozen different patterns you can do. You can make it look like pavers. You can make it look like brick. Uh basically, they place the asphalt and then there's a heated um print. Uh kind of like an iron grid, like a waffle pattern that goes on top of the asphalt, and it actually makes a little indent. Um into the asphalt. So uh from afar, it looks like pavers or cobblestone or whatever you want to imprint that pattern as. And then you can also color it. The one on the left shows a all the same color. As though these were slate pavers in a parking lot. The one on the right shows you can get creative and in some of these patterns that have arcs and different lines in different directions. Um you can actually paint some of the arcs different colors. Now, there's a little bit of a price add. The number that's in your budget, the forty seven thousand is for a single color. Um but if there was a desire to do something a little bit more interesting in that space by um adding some different colors. Uh that's an option to um in that space, but this hasn't been fully designed yet. Um if we move forward with this budget amendment, we'll have our uh architects. Will look at the entirety of the site. They'll look at the building. They'll look at the landscaping and they'll come up with a design that they think complements and and works with. Uh the landscaping um and the building, and then we'll get that uh number firmed up.
So I I'm sorry, Julian. So so. With these variables, today we either approve or don't approve. If we approve it. Then it'll come back to us at a future date with, hey, you approved upgrading the parking uh to. Uh so something here are some options, then we'll get to choose which of those options. Is that right?
Well, so at the moment, what it is is a it's a budget request that's going to allocate funds to the project based on. Our estimates of what these items will be. Some of them will come in low, some of them will come in high. Um we're not necessarily going to come back every time that we have one of those items that varies from the price we've given you because these are our budget numbers. I think if there's big ticket items here that you want to weigh in on such as. We'd be interested if you get a cost proposal for that enhanced landscape for the enhanced parking lot. If it came in. At a little bit more expensive, we would think that would be a good use of your project contingencies to spend a little bit more money. Or if you think that um you know, your number you gave me is forty seven thousand for enhanced parking lot. I don't think we should spend any more. On that parking lot, then I can take that direction and we won't explore any more enhancing that. So. We're not necessarily going to come back with the details of all of.
All right. So I I guess my question is really who's making the design decisions?
So the the architects that are responsible for the overall building design. Um are making the design recommendations.
Okay, and who's giving the thumbs up or thumbs down on those recommendations?
So at this point, unless you provide me a direction that you want me to come back to you with that, that's the project team.
So that's.
That's me.
You, okay.
The architect, yes.
Okay.
But but to be clear. When it, when. Julian needs to go into the contingency, he runs that. To my office too, and Miss Gabrielle takes a look at it. He's talking about if if it all falls within the budget you approve.
Right now, I I I'm so hypothetically, you know, say, listen, we we'd like some nice. Parking lot for part of the parking because it's going to be used. Um. And then you look, then your group looks at, well, here are the choices. Here's the budget. We're going to choose. We never hear from hear about it. It's done. Is that correct? As long as it's within the budget, we approve.
I think when we see something that. Particularly me as the the layperson, if I kind of go, well, that looks like something I want to hear from. Somebody else about. We've a couple of times tapped. The working group of the Commons Foundation and the and the committee to just say. Is this insane? Right? We've done that a few times. Um if it's. Actually, we've tended to always pick the conservative options. So uh.
Yeah, no, no, I I I I'm just curious for for design if we as the city council. Have our thumb on the scale for the design or we're we're basically here for the budget and we're delegating the design to you guys.
Kind of your call.
Well, I think we've done uh the working group and you've sat on it with me. We've done a lot of of um conversation about. This exterior design um over the course of the summer and with the Commons Foundation there and other representatives. Talking about the outdoor um. This example being that we could potentially have outdoor events in a confined space, and that was discussed. So I think it's kind of been a collaboration that way.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that of all the items that are in here, this is probably, and this is why there's a separate slide.
Right.
This is the one that probably has a component that some people may say, why did you do that? Or why did you do? This as far as the budget goes. Um you know, we wouldn't go beyond ten percent outside of the number, rule of thumb.
Right.
Uh without coming back and say, hey, we've got an option here. Uh you know, we could make it look really good, but it's going to cost eighty thousand instead of forty. That's not something that. I have authority with the the budget that's approved for the project to do. Um but if you're interested um in either giving direction that we're okay going a little bit higher to get it. An additional aesthetic, then we would take that feedback. Or. If you want our design team to come back to the ad hoc committee for the library and say, run the final final design by them, then then we would take that direction. Also, this stamped asphalt. I have the schedule in front of me, but it's probably not going in for a while. They usually don't do the final lift of asphalt to the very end because you don't want it to get. Damaged. So it's not something we have to decide tonight.
Right.
Um you know, I my expectation is we'll have another library update where we can show you what this will look like. Before it gets installed, so we can have that conversation at our next. Um library update in front of you and show here's what we're thinking of, and then you can thumbs up or thumbs down at at that point.
The design of you of using the um part of the north or east, east part of the parking lot for. Uh overflow for let's say an arch fair or something like that still exists. It's just the enhancement of its visual content. Uh which could be negotiable at this point. But the confining and sort of blocking off that area is still part of the plan. That's already been accredited. I'm taken care of. Yeah.
Yeah, when if you go back to the meeting where the council instructed us to do the option to move the parking lot southward to create more space, that sort of new gathering area. It was during that discussion that there was a a separate discussion about whether we needed so much parking. And we talked about we would come back at some point with an option. To delineate between, you know, we we kind of call it the east and west. Part of the parking lot. I mean, it's a small parking lot, but there is sort of a clear east and west side. And so we had that discussion. You know, that was well over a year ago about. We'll come back at some point and talk about some way to visually delineate. The east side from the west side where the. East side might be closed off at times and used as a plaza of some sort. That was something we had understood the council was interested in. And this is a very cost effective way to do that.
So Julian, you have one more slide and um.
Yeah, I have one more slide. It's all numbers. Um.
Oh, this is, this is, this Stephanie likes these, so I'd still make sure we got to it.
This is what I'm doing here is taking, if you remember at the beginning of my presentation, I had a slide of your budget as as approved today, which was the eighteen point zero three nine million. This is now taking that same slide, and I've inserted all of the numbers in the different categories of uh funds here that are. Included in this budget amendment. Request. So. You want to start at the left and and again, there are six different projects, mostly for accounting purposes because we have some grant funding here, and we want to make sure that. Um we're able to uh do those grant reports and and isolate costs. Um and so for the six different projects, the first column, the said, well, the third column is funding. That's the total amount of funding that's for each one of those individual projects. So. You get down to the bottom line. It shows we were at eighteen point um zero three nine. Um so your budget request tonight shows that you're um the request is to add one point six seven million. That's in yellow. You can see how it's divided up uh for each one of the projects. And then as you move over in the funding, the first, the next two columns are the grants. So there's no more grant money. Uh so those stay the same. Uh your third column T C F, that's the Commons Foundation. So what you see in yellow there is the components of. The five hundred ninety eight thousand dollar uh budget amendment request for the Commons Fund. And then under other, the two hundred twenty thousand, that's the refugia. Uh funds that are in yellow there, the add. And then the last column is the eight fifty two that I just went through on the on a couple of uh spreadsheets and shows how it's split up. Uh amongst the projects, which. Doesn't really mean a whole lot. It's just one site, um but there are six different um account codes. And there's about fifteen different funding sources. So there's a big matrix on where all the money goes, and this is kind of. Everything summarized to to highlight what the what the budget request is. Um so that's, that was my last slide. So. I did mention that refugia are here and they have a presentation also. So. Not sure if you want to move into their presentation or if you have questions on this before we move into their part.
So the action requested tonight is um to adopt a resolution at um with the one point six seven. Uh. Eight, I don't have my glasses on. Um or the second item is to discuss the the um. Yeah, give direction to staff whether we want to reduce that or reduce the project scope. So. Um those are our two options tonight. So I think it would be helpful before we get into that, we hear the rest of the presentation about um the habitat. And refuges because that's part of this whole ask. So.
Can I ask one?
Catch me first.
Um. When it comes to the Commons Foundation, um. Do we have access to their finances, you know, in the sense that? Do we know if they have additional funds that may be available for us before we dip into our general fund? I mean, if they're they're raising money. To build the library and they have additional funds they have not spent yet. Do we know that? I mean, how what? funds they have not spent yet, do we know that? I mean, what is our relationship with them as far as, you know, disclosure and everything?
They've always provided me with the balance sheet when I've asked for one, which I haven't in a while. They, we met with, Julian and I met with Ann Morrison recently. She assured us they have the commitment that's here.
But do we know if there's additional funds outside that commitment?
I do not. I, I can report that she was discussing pivoting soon to think about the future and supporting the library once it's open. So I'm assuming and interpreted that to mean they're in the wind down phase of raising money or they've stopped raising money specifically for the building. I will say too, and I was thinking about during this whole presentation, because, you know, in a, in a normal project, if a thirteen million dollar project became an eighteen million dollar project, you'd be calling for the public board director and the city manager's head. But, you know, we have this partner that just keeps showing up with more and more money and ideas. And so I will put a caveat, there are some of these enhancements. The one that always comes to mind for me is that monument sign enhancement that was never in any plan until a donor said, I would really like that. And our director said, I would really like that too. And the donor said, I'm going to pay for that. And we said, okay, then maybe we could do a monument sign. There's a lot of things in this recently are that. But anyway, to answer your question, I don't have an answer whether they have additional monies passed.
Okay. But, but what I'm hearing from what you're saying is that if they do have additional monies, they may be reserving that for an endowment as opposed to using that towards the enhancements that we're discussing.
I don't have the ability to frame it. I don't feel confident I can say what you just said. What I can say is I've been assured that they have or will have the amount of money they've committed that's in this budget amendment. They are talking about the future. Whether that means they have monies already, I don't know the answer to that question. And I haven't looked at a balance sheet with them to understand that.
Okay.
I think though, for to your question, I think it tends to be with these projects, a little bit of a moving target because as they become more materialized, as they form themselves and they become a real presence, some people step forward and say, hey, I'd really like to, to pay for that enhancement or I'd really like to contribute. So it's probably a bit of not close the door all the way, leave it open for people who are interested in further donations once they really see that this project is, I would say seventy five percent complete, maybe even more, that they will see that there's a successful project and they want to be a participant in it. So I think we're still in that realm. But as an independent five oh one C three, I, I think they can share their information with us, but we have no, and Sky can correct me, but I don't think we have a, a legal ability to demand disclosure of their, of their books. Right? Not really.
No, but I mean, by the same token, you don't have to agree, you don't, you don't have to authorize additional project elements without some evidence that they have the funds to, to make their, the contributions that they promised.
And I think they've been very collaborative all along when requested. So is, would you like to come forward? Julian, is this a good fit for having Dana?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you like to sit down or are you comfortable there or whatever you want? It's your call. Okay.
So, um, so I think, yeah, we're going to bring this up. So Julian did an amazing job of like saying everything very articulately and in detail. So some of what I'm going to say is going to be a repeat, but it's going to have pictures. So, you know, not spreadsheets, but pictures. So one of the things.
So, sorry to interrupt you, but before.
Sorry, Dana Swisher.
Tell us for the record so that people who are unfamiliar with you, like we are so familiar, just tell us, you know, your name and what Refugia does. Because you're our partner now.
That's right. My name's Dana Swisher. I'm the founder and executive director of Refugia Marin. And that's why I'm up here is we're a partner with the city and with RHAA and other, the contractors. And we're really excited and, and love the collaboration that we're seeing. Refugia Marin transforms public spaces into thriving native habitat, public habitat, sorry, plant habitat. And you, if you haven't already, we have many gardens around Corder Madera, Larkspur, and now in Samarthal. And these are just some examples up here of some of our projects. So the one up in the left is Hall Middle School, just finishing up, completing that project. And we have town park in the middle. That is been, that's going on four years of work. And the far right shows one of our monarchs showing up. We have, even at Hall, that's just finished, we are already seeing an increase in pollinators, birds and wildlife. So it's very effective is the native plant habitat gardens. So we're really excited about them. Ultimately, these projects, we've got about thirty four thousand square feet in total, add value to the town by adding beauty to the landscape sustainably. These projects increase habitat and biodiversity for wildlife and human enjoyment. All right. So we're going to go to the next slide. I guess I should have that. And this is just a map. In case anybody hasn't seen it already, this is our conceptual plan. You can see the habitat garden starts up in the northeast corner and goes along like the J shape, the perimeter of the property. And we've got the berm planting areas on the, on the east side. We have plans for a children's area up in that, it's the meadow and lower height habitat planting area. It's going to be more of like a children's garden. And then there's biofiltration areas. We have the corner, which is sort of our meditation kind of reflection place with some gathering space. And then the far, the southwest corner is the meadow, which Stephanie, we were talking about is, it really is going to be planted with grasses and coyote brush. And it's going to be a great bird habitat. And we're all going to have a wildlife viewing structural, structures there that are going to enhance it. But it is the most reasonable place to put a building in the future with the least impact on the larger trees and shrubs and things like that. I had never used this button before, but I'm going to go with the arrow in the middle of the square. This one. Okay. Thank you. So Julian did a great job explaining the priorities of phase one. And so this is a, a photo of the bermed areas. And that's just an example of one of the trees that we've selected for our native plant habitat area. The placing the trees is important to do ahead of time. And having Alton with its trucks and, and equipment available to dig the holes and place the trees exactly where we want them, will inform the grading, the enhanced grading that goes in. If we come in afterwards, place them, then they're, we have to come back in with grading machines and that disrupts. And it's more costly. Also, putting the trees in early gives them a longer time to grow. Like we want those trees growing as fast as we can, providing a barrier to the neighborhoods, creating more shade, which that area gets really hot. I mean, that whole site gets really hot. So we want those trees to have the, the most amount of time to grow. Boulders are also essential landmarks for the landscape. They're heavy and they need to be moved with equipment. If, again, if they do, if does all the grading and we come back in and we try and place the boulders, we're going to have to regrade around them. We're going to create some disruption to what's already done and then have to regrade. So it's, it's cutting costs by bringing, having Alton do it now. And we've been very impressed with how efficient that their contractors have been. And then last, again, if you're going to be digging the post holes into that, that very compacted earth, these guys have the auger, they can come through and probably get it done extremely quickly as opposed to our, our, the contractors we're going to be working with are mostly contractors who are very skilled at native plants. They do boulders, but they bring them in on their trucks and then they get guys to like roll them down on a, on a wood plank. And then they, and it takes a lot longer. It just, it's going to take more time and money to do it than having. Oh, I'm talking about boulders. Shoot. Sorry. I meant to be talking about the fence. Sorry. The, having them do the post hole is just, it's just much faster, basically, and efficient. And it really defines the space so that when people come onto the site, they're not going to be walking up on the bermed areas and around the trees and disrupting it. It's kind of a visual like, hey, this is a planted area. So, so this is just the, the cost breakdown of phase one. So you can see you've already, Julian's already talked about this, but you've got the sub totals on the side. You've got the totals that Refugia has already committed to the two hundred and twenty thousand. And then we have the city totals for the irrigation granitecrete. And then what we're asking, what, what we're in, we're adding our incremental payment. I can't see what's up there because my picture's covering it. But anyway, it's what we're asking for is the additional trees, boulders, and rope and post fence are the ones that we're really eager to have covered by the city. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. So that's phase one, phase two.
Phase one.
Yeah. Phase two is hoping to start right away, which is an additional thirty, seventy three thousand, two hundred and sixty four.
Right. So RHAA, Carson is going to be working on a planting, a detailed planting plan, which we are hoping will be done in the next two weeks. We'll get our planting contractors out, bids out. And then we hope to start planting as soon as we can. We really don't want to be planting in February when it's wet and soggy.
Yeah. And you're hoping that at phase two, that you're being able to secure additional donation funding?
We have money for the planting part. We're holding that back. We're not including it in this because we want it for the planting.
Yes.
And then phase three is what we're going to be, we are actively fundraising for now. We actually have a, a large fundraiser planned at the Lark Theater on April twenty eighth. So it will actually be later than when the, the grand opening of the libraries happened. But that's where we're hoping to get the majority of the funding for all of the special amendments.
Yeah. That, that, that sound terrific, all these special. And I, I actually have a new granddaughter who's going to love playing on these things.
Yeah. Yeah. So that'll be part of it. But, but the fundraiser is April twenty eighth, Lark Theater with my sister-in-law, Kara Swisher is going to be there and had a conversation with people about the importance of, of living a good life. And that includes access to nature. And for me, I just think a lot, all our gardens are incredibly accessible. You know, they give you that touch with nature without having to take a hike up Mount Tam. You go get your book at the library, you have your coffee in the square, and then you take a twenty five foot walk over and you're in nature and you get your little nature touch and your endorphins go up and you're feeling better and take some deep breaths and it's good for everybody.
Great. Thank you. I wrote down April twenty eighth on my, I'll be there. I have Burn book next to my.
Oh, great. Excellent. A Kara Swisher fan.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Okay. Okay. So Dana's done? Are there questions? Yes.
Not a question, but I just want to say thank you.
Oh.
And not on behalf of, of everybody that I represent, this project is coming along so nicely. And it's really because everybody is, is stepping up and taking responsibility for part of it. And it's not all falling on us. And it makes it possible. We wouldn't have been able to do it if everybody else didn't step up and, and do this. And I think it's going to be a fantastic project. And that's because everybody is stepping up. And I just want to say we really appreciate everything that you're doing.
Well, I want to thank you guys. I've never, we have never worked with Larkspur. We've worked a lot with Corder Madera. And I didn't know how it would be working with Larkspur, even though I'm a Larkspur resident. And it's been amazingly collaborative. I mean, everybody on this project's been amazing. So thank you. Yeah.
Great. Other questions? Dana? Is there further presentation?
No, we made it quick and sweet because we know things go long.
Yeah. No, thank you. All right. Okay. That's what I was, wanted to make sure any of the team needed to, would like to add anything. So Julian, come on back. So the action request, is there any, that's the most, that's the presentation we're?
Yes.
Okay. So your action request for us is to adopt the resolution which you outlined or to provide direction to staff as to whether to reduce the scope of the remaining project items to reduce the contribution from the general fund reserve. So I think I'd like to begin there. If the, any of the council has some, would like to lead any discussion on some of the items that are listed and, and argument as to whether we should keep them in or release them. And it looks like Scott has something to say.
I was just supposed to say nothing. So I, I, I am, I'm happy to start this with my just, just feelings on this. I'm a little concerned because we keep throwing more and more money at this thing, you know? And part of our responsibility is our fiduciary duty to our, you know, taxpayers and our citizens. The other side is that so many people are stepping up and donating privately to make this a phenomenal project. I kind of feel that we kind of owe it to these people to step up as well. So, I mean, it's hard to say no when, you know, you have so many millions of dollars that other people have privately said, hey, we want a really nice library, want a really nice, you know, nature area around it. And they, they dug into their, their wallets and, and voted with their wallets. And it's, it's kind of hard not to, to, to also meet the requests. So I'm struggling because it's a lot of money, but I kind of feel that this is what our community wants. That's my thoughts.
So you asked some questions about the proposed enhancements, like having them broken out, like the colored stamped parking lot. Is that a concern to you at this point? I mean, he broke, he broke out the two, two hundred and twenty seven, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that category.
I thought the colored stamped parking lot was gorgeous.
Okay.
I was just curious who was making the decision of what parking lot we're going to do or how that was going to work out. But I don't have any qualms about, you know, I think that's a, a worthwhile enhancement for, you know, from my opinion.
Is any other council member has anything that they would like to discuss of this that stands out for them that may be an enhancement we don't need at this point?
I don't think it's an enhancement that we don't need, but just another comment on the stamped parking lot. I also agree that it looks very nice. I would be interested in just the longevity of, or the durability of that treatment. I don't want to spend fifty thousand dollars and then it doesn't last very long. But I agree, it looks, it looks very nice. And I, I do think that it will enhance the space and allow us to use it differently than just, you know, parking cars on it. So I do think it's, it's money worth spending, but I also am curious how durable the treatment is.
You're going to be able to bring that back to us in, at a future meeting?
Yeah, I think we'll bring you more information on that the next time we come forward to you with a, a presentation. The, the wear and tear on it depends on how much it gets used.
Yeah.
And a lot of the, there are other installations that, that are nearby that we can walk and go look at. And you can see how they've held up over time. And a lot of it is, it's, it's tire marks that can be cleaned off, especially in a parking lot where people are turning tires, you'll get some, some tracking, especially with a lighter color. So that's something that the architects will consider when they make their recommendation for that surface is sometimes a really lighter colors that may be a little bit more attractive at first, but they may show, they may stain a little bit more and not look so good in five years. So we'll make that part of a, a follow-up discussion. Yeah.
Julian, do we, we've created a contingency budget also for, once we move in, if there's items that we perhaps maybe overlooked and we really need to add. Let, let me give, I'll give you the example that I gave on Friday, which was just an automatic opener to the, to the restroom for a disabled individual. So where, where does that fit into where we're projecting some of the budget now? If there are things that we perhaps overlooked or realize that we really do. that we really do need after we move in?
Yeah. So some of those, some of those smaller items, as we move through this, and we will, at the end of the project, we'll reconcile all of the dollars and and we'll have a, here's exactly how much we spent, and here's what the budget was. This is a 1.67 budget amendment. Most of these are budgeted amounts. The final dollar amount that we spend on these is not going to be 1.67. It's going to be off by a little bit. So there are going to be some things that are going to come up that are maybe $1,000 here or $1,000 savings there that will just occur in the natural progression of finishing out the project, like buttons and things like that, that you mentioned that are, that are not on the scale that we would come back to you with a budget amendment. If there's a, a big ask, if there's a big ticket item that, oh, this is, we hadn't thought about this, this is a great opportunity to do it, we'll, we'll come back to you and go over that. But the small things, plus minus little delta on this, you're, we'll have a final report at the end of the project and you'll see all that. But there's probably going to be 20 or 30 things that'll go one way or the other before we finish with this project cost wise. And at the end of the day, it's not going to move that 1.67 number very much.
Sarah, did you have a question?
Just to tag on to your question about that contingency fund, because you did mention that we're only leveraging 300 of the contingency fund. So I'm just curious about what is left in the contingency fund? And what was the thinking behind, well, we're going to maintain X dollars in the contingency fund rather than spend them and ask for budget to remove this from the general reserve?
So there was initially 613,000 in the contingency fund. When you adopted the first budget amendment for the project, after it was awarded, when we added the solar and the batteries, and we did a number of other changes, we allocated half of the project's contingency allowance to that budget amendment. So that 306,500 that you see, that's the remainder, that's everything that's left in the contingency. The first half of it, we already absorbed when we did those, all of those changes back a year ago or so. So the only contingency we have left now is when you awarded Rose Lane, there's some contingency allowance in that project because it involves some underground construction. And we always don't know what we're going to find when we dig into the ground. So there is a little bit of contingency allowance in there. Other than that, in this 1.67, these are all budgeted numbers. And there's a little bit of cushion there for things that come in a little bit higher. But like I said, there's not, not anything for like the $100,000 things that come on, that come up, will be coming back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just chime in too, you know, as the building goes live and we see these additional things, at that point, we have a facility and we have our standard budget practices for enhancing and mending and improving our facilities. So some expenses, like realizing we should have added an extra ADA push button or something like that, we may just end up charging to our standard facility.
Okay. Great. Scott?
Question for Dan. We just approved $3 million for the rec building like a month ago. I know you are fiscally conservative, and I know that we have a reasonable reserve fund. I am assuming this would not be in front of us unless you felt comfortable that we could afford to pay this amount and still have sufficient money in our reserves to handle any future downturns, at least in the medium term.
So I think the city is extremely well insulated for operational downturn. Your reserve policies are among the most robust in the county. You have a lot of money parked to protect the operations. So we really are talking about, excuse me, capital dollars that, you know, we've talked about the same thing with the rec building, you spend the dollar here, you can't spend it there. You still have a healthy capital fund. And so I think you still have the money for projects as they come along. I want to express, you know, to you and to the community, I think passing Measure G and creating a stream of money to deal with the storm drains is also part of this whole picture. Because what that did is it's, it was the community saying, we see that's important enough to create a ongoing stream for that. And that's allowed us to be a lot more thoughtful with our capital money for all these other things that the community would like to see happen. And so I do acknowledge that with gratitude, that the community's faith in passing Measure G is part of the bigger picture. Because had they not done that, I'd probably be answering this question differently. I'd be saying, well, I don't have a good storm drain fund to rely on. And now we do.
Thank you.
So this is a business item. So I'd like to open it up to the public if there are any questions or comments. So we'll start in the chamber. Anyone, we're all, we're all on the team here together. So anyone have any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, join us. Hello, Dr. Swisher.
Hello, I'm Jeff Swisher. I'm proud husband of Dana Swisher. Also, full disclosure, I'm chairman of the Planning Commission here in Larkspur. I just want to say one quote about the planting and how this is going to look. It says that a great society basically plants trees that they may never see the shade of. And I think that this is one of the things that Larkspur, as Mr. Candell perfectly pointed out, that we have a public that is very interested in this. And that we've donated personally, Dana and I have donated to this project, and I know many other people who have. And I think that your sentiment is 100% on the mark, that the public does want this. And we've seen what Refugia has done with Hall and with Neil Cummins School, etc. And if you haven't walked by there, anybody, please do, it's amazing. So I'm all for this. And as a member of the public, I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else in the chamber? So is there any hands raised online? Okay, so I'll bring it back to us for further discussion or questions. We've been asked to adopt a resolution outstanding for school year 2025-26 with the capital improvement to add 1.670713, broken into three categories of funds. But the part that the city would put forward is 852,295 in general fund reserve.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. The other groups give that money to the city and the city commits to the total? Is that how that works?
Yeah. So we are always, when we adopt these amendments, guaranteeing the project, right? And that amount. And then our groups, our partners then transfer money to support us. So we can use the Commons Foundation, they've to date transferred $5 million to the city. And they'll transfer the balance this spring. So.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Or the second option we have is to provide direction to staff. Is anybody interested in following that route or Item One, which is to approve and adopt the budget request as asked, as outlined? Okay.
I would make a motion in, well, Gabe, you have comments you want to make?
No, no.
Well, I want to make her, if anybody has any, Item Two, which is to provide a different direction, does anybody feel that they have different direction they want to debate? Okay, just giving everybody time. All right. So it sounds like we have a resolution. What is its number here? To adopt? There you go. To consider adoption of resolution amending the fiscal year 25-26 capital improvement project for the Larkspur Library at the Commons and provide directions to, to the Commons project. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Motion to move the resolution to adopt, to amend the budget, Resolution 5125 to amend the budget in the amount of 1.670713.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Right, that motion passes. Thank you very much, Julian and Dana, for your work and everybody else for this project. I see the finish line. I see the finish line coming. So, which we will have lots of celebrations. I already know lots of people are wanting to have events and space and use the space, not to mention the books in the library. So we are adjourned. Our next meeting is Wednesday, November 19, same time. Are we not meeting, are we meeting early at, for our budget meeting at 3 o'clock? Or is that?
The council is having a separate special session to do a workshop about general city finances.
At the regular, and the regular meeting is 6:30?
That's correct.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.